Second at 7:00 PM. Welcome, everybody. We need to approve the agenda. We need to add excess weight permit, and we need to add liquor license, and we need to add public comment to the bottom.
We also need to add, um, we need to set the dates for the bylaws, public hearings.
Dates for bylaws.
Please.
Okay. I don't know what order we want to all do this in, but we can figure it out as we go.
Can I, can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry. For some reason, Megan has no control for muting people in here. And so I'm going to ask whoever is on the LG, the tablet, the LGL322DL, if you could mute yourself, please. Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, so we need to approve the minutes, the warrants, correspondence.
Let's put the, um, weight permits, um, let's put the excess weight permits, the liquor licenses, and the bylaws in right after correspondence.
Okay.
4A?
4A it is.
A, B, and C?
Yep. Okay, so it's going to be approve of the agenda, approve the minutes, warrants, correspondence, excess weight permit, um, liquor license, and the bylaws, correct? All right, and then five is board appointments, six is change of service contractor for the town hall project, seven is scheduling race on June 5th and 6th, presented by Paul Goya and Priscilla Maxim, LEMP Emergency Management Plan, number nine, award mowing bid, 10, Lister's Work Agreement, 11 is town clerk salary, 12 is revised zoning permit application, 13 is revised building permit, 16 is cover ordinance, 15, public comment, 16, adjournment. Can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept the agenda with changes.
Okay, Mike?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Is Bob on?
No.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, approval of minutes of April 8, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Warrants? Payroll ending 4/16 for $9,837.57. Um, payroll ending 4/23, 2021 for $10,867.77. Can I entertain a motion for these two? I'd like to keep them separate tonight.
We need to keep the payroll separate.
Right, from this one.
Well, we need to keep them separate anyway.
Right.
From the, I think we need to separate these two. I think my, I am, I'm in one of these payrolls, correct then?
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that, Mike. Sorry.
That's what I was getting at, sorry. I couldn't spit it out.
Okay.
Having a little trouble.
All right, so this is the first one.
That's the six, 4/16.
4/16 for $9,837.57. Can I entertain a motion? To accept this payroll.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Abstain.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
All right. Second, payroll ending 4/23, 2021 for $10,867.77.
Make a motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Uh, Bob, can you hear me?
All right. I wrote this down. I have the list. All right, accounts payable 4/19 to 4/23 for $60,599.74. Um, Sheriff's Department for $6,277.50. Bondio Company, their final payment for $4,200. Main Street Bridge for $1,564. Green Mountain Power for $2,709.84. John Ray Sun for $1,785.31. MVP Healthcare for $7,982.28. Um, I'm going to abstain because there's a payment in there for reimbursement for gas that I paid for at Stewart's. So can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion, approve accounts payable.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Uh, Bob, you got a?
I'll mute yourself, sir.
It's not mute. Something else is wrong. Now can you hear me?
Um, we'll be right with you, Bob. Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
It carries.
It carries. Hang on one second. Let's see if we can get Bob back on.
Uh, can it, can you hear me yet?
He's talking, but we can't hear you, mister.
It's not muted. I don't know what the issue is.
We can't hear Bob through this, but we can hear him in the other computer. So let me switch the microphone into the other port and see if it does something, please.
Settings. Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Well, yes, but hold on. Let me see if I can get you in this mic, okay?
All right.
Well, I'm wondering if the volume is accidentally hit off or something.
Bob, you want to try again?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Ah, there you are.
All right, so you did hear me.
Yeah, now we can, yes. I don't know what was going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right, are we all set to move on, everyone? Okay. The correspondence, we're going to turn this over to Rebecca for a minute.
Okay, so correspondence, very quickly, um, as everyone knows, just so the public understands, we decided to add correspondence back to, uh, the regular agenda, that we will not be reading full letters from people. This is just to, any kind of correspondence of any significance, we're going to give a quick summary of it so people know what's going on. So this, in the past couple of weeks, um, we, uh, received notification from the state that our updated foundation plans were approved. Um, as everyone here knows, we decided to request to do a traditional foundation instead of the one that was originally designed, as that one is very difficult to find people who install them. Um, and we had it approved with our engineer, the state, and with preferred builders, so that's all ready to go. Um, it also, uh, does bring some savings to the project. Um, secondly, we have received, I believe, a couple correspondences regarding the trash on Route 7, um, we, which we've all noticed driving through, um, and we have begun having communications about that. Uh, I know that, uh, Mike has spoken with Casella about trucks with caps and without them. Um, and then lastly, I have been in communication with Megan Randall and Dave Lowe regarding Greenup Day. I helped them create a flyer that they'll be, um, putting around town. It is now on the website. I'm going to post it on Facebook. So Greenup Day is coming. If people want to participate, they can go to the transfer station and get bags and then fill them up, and then they can bring those back to the transfer station to throw them out. So that's it for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. So then the next, the excess weight permit for William Lonsberry, can I entertain the motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Jamie? Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, so then we have liquor license for the Village Market. Can I entertain a motion to accept?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Then we have three for, um, American Legion, one's for the finance officer and the commander, and the other one is for the Pono Post 19. And the other one is Pono Post 19 also, so it must be? One's indoor, one is outdoor.
Isn't it Post 90?
90, yes. Did I say 19? I'm sorry.
I just know, I just don't want any question later.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion, please?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, now we have to move on to, um, set a date for the bylaws?
Two.
We need two of them, that's correct. And they have to be 15 days apart, correct?
No, you need 15 days to warn. They can be, I suggest having them either, what, in the past, things like this have been done like a Tuesday and a Wednesday, or you could do a Tuesday and then the following Tuesday, but we need 15 days to warn. Um, so I would suggest starting to, like, give Megan a chance to get the warning together, so I would schedule it for maybe two, uh, three weeks out and four weeks out, or two of them three weeks out.
The soonest, the soonest that we can have it on a Tuesday night is May 11th, with, with the 15 days. I, I was doing that as we opened the meeting. That would be the soonest Tuesday night that we could do it, have it for a 15-day warning, at least 15 days.
Is that our regular week also as meeting, Chris Leford?
It's the second Tuesday, then, yes.
No, I was just wondering, because you have to do it two, that we could do it like at 6 o'clock before our meeting as well, if we had to?
Yeah, so you could do one.
We could do May 11th and May 13th, sure.
Yeah.
No, good idea.
So both of them at 6?
May 11th and May 13th?
Yep, both of them at 6 o'clock. Let's keep it easy.
Yep. Is that okay with everybody? You need a motion?
I would.
All right, can I have?
I'll make a motion that we, um, have our bylaw zoning board, uh, bylaws, um, on Tuesday night, May 11th at 6:00 PM, and Wednes, or Thursday night, May 13th at 6:00 PM, the public hearings are, would be those nights for the adoption of the new bylaws.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, I would like to, um, just, is there a soft copy associated with those that we can post to our website? If it's already there, and I apologize.
They're on the website, Bob.
They're on the website, Bob.
Uh, are the, the proposed ones or the current ones?
All right, so Bob, um, the, the proposed bylaws have been on the website for about six months, and I posted them on Facebook as well, but I will repost them. We also printed out a few copies here at the town hall if people wanted to look at them. Um, however, you know, the office is closed, so they are available on, um, the website, and if somebody would like us to email them a link to them, make, you know, if they have difficulty finding them, I'm happy to help with that, and they can send the info at townaponal.org.
Okay, I, I, just as a suggestion, I would suggest we put it on the cover, on the cover page, because we're leading up to a, here, on the opening page of our website.
I can ask, um, Jen Holly to do that.
Okay.
I'll send her an email too. Okay?
Okay, sorry, I'm finding my life away here. So is that it for correspondence? Make sure I didn't miss anything. Excess weight, bylaws, yep, trash, garbage, okay, we're good. All right, moving on to five board appointments. All right, where's my paper? So, Planning Commission, we have three open positions, and the term is for four, is that four years?
Yes.
Four years.
Four years.
And we have, Paul Skakely, Skelly, is that how you say it?
Paul, it looks like Paul Scagnelli.
Scagnelli, Leo Hagerty, Fred Miller, and Megan, or Megan Randall, excuse me, Megan, I always do that. So.
We're doing these one at a time?
Yes, please, so we don't screw nothing up.
Let me make a motion that we reappoint Megan Randall to the Planning Commission.
I second.
I'll second that.
Sorry.
I'll second that. Sorry.
That's fine. Any further discussion on that? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Paul Scagnelli to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Make a motion, we appoint Fred Miller to the Planning Commission.
Second. Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, DRB?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Paul Scagnelli.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Um, I make a motion that we, um, Matt Gardner for DRB.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Abstain.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Matt Ringer.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, internal auditors, we haven't had any applications yet, correct?
No.
Okay. Ponds keeper, we've had no applications. We still have, um, two positions open, and they're for one year. Internal audit, there's three open positions. Um, home health rep is one position. We've had no, um, interest in that as well. Parks and rec, we have three open positions, and we've had two people for that. So can I entertain a motion for?
I'll nominate Brian Harris.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Um, can I have another nomination for Paul?
Make a motion, we nominate Paul Scagnelli.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. The VCRC is for one year, and we've had, we have one opening, excuse me, for three years, and there's been no letters of intent. Last thing on here is E911. One position is open. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll nominate Priscilla Maxim. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody, that was interested in running for these positions. Sometimes they can be a thankless job, and we appreciate everything.
Can I make a comment on the, uh, on just the nomination process?
Absolutely.
I, I do appreciate that we tried that meet and greet, or the meet and greet, um, but I, I, just in my opinion, I frankly didn't like the process. I think it puts a, it shines a big light on, on individuals. It puts them in an uncomfortable position. And, and quite frankly, we have a hard enough time getting people to step forward for their community that, uh, I, I, I would prefer that we didn't do that again. And I just wanted to make that comment so it got entered into the record, because I don't want next year, uh, somebody, the new board, to decide to look back and go that, and to think that there was no, uh, objection to, or no downside to that process. I think we, as a board, need to, if we don't know candidates, we need to reach out to them, and we need to ensure that we get the candidates in advance enough that we can reach out to them.
Okay, Bob, thank you. I just wanted to say one more thing as well. We have a position of health officer open, um, that came into effect on Tuesday. So if there's anybody out there that's interested in being the health officer, please reach out with a letter of intent and send it to the town office, to Tim. Thank you very much.
And we will also.
Put it on the website as well. Thank you.
And the paper. That one has to go in the paper, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Change of service for Contractor Town Hall Project.
Okay, so, yeah, so change of service, the contractor, so, um, uh, as, as you know, because it happened kind of moments before the last select board meeting, Missina Builders backed out of the project. Um, and so, um, we, well, I actually consulted with our town attorney to ensure, is this something that needed to be rebid? Or, and he said, no, because it's an already approved project. It's a change of service. And since we are under a timeline, um, uh, Mike Gardner and I reached out to several contractors that we know that are local, and asked them if they might be interested. Two of those contractors out of the several we reached out to did come in to the office to have a meeting with us so we could go over the, every little specific of the project. And one of them has submitted, um, a letter of interest in taking over the role of the, the contractor, um, the builder, uh, at the exact same rate as what was budgeted for, um, from Missina Builders. Um, and, um, Mike can talk more about, um, that contractor, and, uh, there you go.
So, just to clarify a couple of things, the reason we don't have to go back out to bid is because, um, the contractors that we reached out to, we asked them to try to stay within that same working rate as what was in the original bid and quote. So as long as they stayed within that original quote, we did not have to go back out to bid. Um, and that's according to Bob Fisher. So, we did meet, um, with two contractors. They had some great questions. Um, they both were very qualified. We do have a letter of intent from one contractor. Um, and we tried to stay local in town, for sure. Um, Aaron Gilbert, um, gave us a letter of intent. Um, I personally have seen some of Aaron's work. Um, Aaron did, um, Aaron did a lot of the interior work, or almost all of it, in the Rescue Squad building, and that's where, you know, I, I've seen most of his work. I, I know he's, has, um, a really strong reputation for that kind of work, and they had some great questions.
And he brought on his friend as well.
We, we met with him twice. He has, he has someone that he works with who also lives in town. Um, Eric Marcel. Yep, Eric Marcel. Eric and Aaron work together on a lot of projects. Um, personally, I'm extremely confident that they can handle this project moving forward. And, um, I, I would highly recommend.
Maybe explain it's not a full GC job?
It is not a full GC. Part of the GC is going to end up being me, um, because I'm, I'm the person who's signing off on, um, and, and that's how we explained it to all of the contractors, that I would be doing a lot of the general contractor stuff. Um, they're going to bring in their own subs under the same pretenses. We, we stuck with most of the subs that we had. The electrical sub is the same. Um, our, our foundation guy is going to probably change because we're changing foundations. Um, our electrical staying the same. The plumber, they've reached out to a plumber that they work very closely with. Um, he's going to stay within the, um, within the parameters and the budget. Um, what else was it, Rebecca?
That's, I mean, and that we would, as a team, help him with any of the extra, the project management. Tim, myself, and you are really, you know,
Right.
make, following this thing through.
It's a team project. They have been told that, that Tim is here from 8:00 till 4:00 and can get ahold of whoever they need to. Um, myself and Rebecca, um, Megan, you know, it's, it's a team project, and we'll, we'll make it work. Well, I'm, I'm very confident in this.
Uh, so that was it for me. So, um, if you are, um, in support of allowing the change of service to Aaron Gilbert, someone would need to make a motion, and you'd need to have a board approval.
I, I second it then. Could you make the motion? All right, I second it, to bring on Aaron Gilbert to move this project along, please. Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, scheduling the race on June 5th and 6th, presented by organizer Paul Goya and Priscilla Maxim.
Are they out there?
Are they out there?
Yep, hello, how are you?
Hi, Paul.
Hi, guys. How are you, Ben?
I'm here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Priscilla.
I think Paul's here too.
Yep, I'm here.
Well, I'll let Paul do the talking. He's the organizer, and it's, we want to have a race again this year, scheduling it for June 5th and 6th.
Yep, that's what we're, I was hoping to, uh, get on the agenda for, for the 5th and 6th of June. Um, I know last year we tried doing it with the restrictions and whatnot, and just checking to see how things are going in Vermont for you guys.
So as long as you follow all the restrictions this year, which.
They're the same. They're unchanged for outdoor gatherings at the moment, from what I understand. So it would, he would need to, I worked with them last year. Um, I spoke with you last year, Paul. Um, and it, it'll be the same restrictions. I don't believe they've changed, but I can certainly, I'd be following the ACCD, because I do know some things are changing and letting up a little bit. Um, but I'm certainly happy to do what we did last year and work closely with you to make sure you guys have all your ducks in a row on that.
Okay, um, if you can send those to me, again, if you don't mind, just to make sure, because I, we've been, we already had our first race last weekend out in New York, and, uh, we did the same things, followed all the guidelines, um, with the, you know, all the restrictions, uh, masks, uh, you know, had all the, all the COVID guidelines on the tables for everybody to have. Um, just tried, you know, tried to play by all the rules and show everybody the best way we could.
Okay, I don't see any problems as long as they follow the guidelines for COVID. So I make a motion that they're allowed to have the race on June 5th and 6th. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Uh, I have, I have a discussion.
Okay.
Um, who's going to be the responsible party to make sure that they follow the COVID guidelines?
That's not part of the guidelines.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, I, I, I am the one who goes around and polices it, and then I have, um, people who go around telling everybody, you know, make sure you have your masks on, uh, social distancing, uh, everything along that lines. Um, I have got my shots, um, you know, most of my employees have gotten their shots as well, just to, you know, be part of the, part of the, the plan.
Have you reached out to the fire and rescue squad?
I have not yet. Um, I will talk to Mark. Um, he's always, uh, he's always, you know, awesome to us. You guys up there in Pono have, you know, been nothing but more than helpful for me, and I appreciate that. Kind of missed, you know, not being there last year with you guys as well. But I will, I will check with Mark. Um, I'll call him up tomorrow. I don't want to bother him on his night off, but I'll call him tomorrow when he's at the, uh, at the firehouse.
Okay. Any further questions from anybody? Ronnie? Are you okay? Okay, so then can I entertain, do we have a second motion? I forgot already.
Wait, so many motions, so many seconds.
Okay, okay, okay.
You may want to, you could take an action or it could be a public comment on it.
Is there any public comment on this? Please raise your hand. Is there anybody raising their hand?
No.
All right, thank you. So the motion's on the table. There's no public comment. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you soon.
All right, you guys have a good night.
Yeah, have a wonderful evening, and thanks for having us.[1774.53]
You're welcome.
Bye now.
Bye. Okay. Moving on to the L E M P Emergency Management Plan Approval. I looked it over and I have no problem with it, except for they have the names wrong again. The Ponnell School is Mr. Phillips and, oh my God, I wrote it down. Todd Phillips is the principal and Kevin Davis is the maintenance man. And that's who you would contact. The gentleman that they have on there now was at least 10 years ago. And same with Oak Hill Children's Center. They have somebody that was on there 10 years ago. Beth is the, Beth Darter is the manager, I guess you would call her, of Oak Hill. So though with those names, they need to be changed and updated. Okay, does anybody have anything else on the emergency?
Well, I think, I think we, before we sign it, we need to make sure the names are changed.
Right.
And corrected.
Incorrect.
We, we said this last year.
Yep, and it didn't get changed. Yep, so.
I make a motion that we sign the corrected Emergency Management Plan and we don't sign it until they are corrected.
Okay.
So it's accurate.
All right. Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Okay. Award mowing bids, and that's what I was looking for. I don't have them in front of me. Tim, is this you you're gonna talk about it? Okay, because I had them in my phone and that's what I was looking for.
We got three bids from Jay Landscaping, who did the mowing last year, from Gardeners Lawn Care, which was a new company to bid, and then Yard Work by Dan, which was also a new company to bid from out of Mass. The total bid amounts for each, for Jay Landscaping was 3585 for a total yearly of 37,680. Gardeners was a total bid amount of 3385 for a yearly amount of 27,560. And then Yard Work by Dan was 3305 with a yearly of 34,270. So there's quite a bit of a price discrepancy and that comes down to what was, what's being charged for the weekly mowing. But to go by the lowest bid would be Gardeners.
Can you just write that down for the public? There's what, four cleanup?
Sure. So there's a, there's a section for spring cleanup at the pump stations and the cemeteries. There's a portion there for planting, which is about in, around the flagpoles at each of the cemeteries. There's an average of four times a year of mowing at the fire pond. And then there's the weekly mowing, which is 28 weeks worth. And then there's the ball field mowing, which is, which is every other week.
Okay.
Tim, I think, I think on the, on the weekly mowing, I think that, isn't there like 21 sites?
Yeah, yeah, there's quite a few. There's-
I think, I'm pretty sure-
21, there's 21 sites.
21 sites for the weekly mowing.
Yes.
It's a lot of mowing.
Yeah.
Which includes cemeteries, pump stations, the park.
Pump stations.
Town hall.
Town green, town hall.
But there are, there are 21 mowing sites, right?
Okay. And does this person take care of the flags as well if they're damaged?
They do. We purchase the flags, which will be arriving tomorrow. And then they hang them up on the flag, at the flagpoles if they're in need of it.
Okay, so I know that a person came to me and said that there was a damaged one down at the hydro plant park area.
Okay.
Flagpole. Strobridge Park, thank you. The name. Okay, so can I entertain a motion? I make a motion to go with Gardner. He's the cheapest and he's a local and he's new and I'd like to give him a chance. Any further discussion?
The bid was for three years.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Was there any add stuff in there that there was a, did that increase or anything like that in any of their?
No.
Okay. Mike?
I'm staying.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I.
I think, um, I think we're gonna need to get keys. I think all the pump stations are locked. So I'm pretty sure we'll need to get some keys for, for the mowing contractor, for the, at least for the pump stations.
Did we get them back from the last contractor?
I don't know, because he brought his stuff into Linda, so I don't know.
Most of the pump stations aren't in severe areas. So you don't need a key for that.
Is that gate around them to get to them?
No.
I, I think, I think that, well, I think there are several Ronnie that are locked. I think all the gardens, I'm pretty sure is locked.
Oh, it probably is all the gardens.
Yeah, but I know, I know that, you know, there are some. We'll have to give them the combination to the lock at the racetrack on the gate down there, which actually I have that. I can, I can take care of that. Joel sent that to me.
Tim, you have that as well, correct? The combination to the racetrack? You don't have it? Okay, well, I'm gonna, can you text Joel and ask him to get that to Tim, please? Or can you give it?
How about if I do it?
Yes, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
That's what I thought. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to listers' work agreement. Are the listers here? No? So should we table this until we can speak to them?
Yeah, I mean, um, I, I would, if you don't mind, we could talk, we could talk about work agreements very much in general. So we're very clear about what these work agreements are.
Okay.
And what they're not. So work agreements are not a, we're not, it's not about like a specific task, like, oh, you perform exactly these tasks. It's just, it's, it sets the, it says what the compensation is, whether or not that position qualifies for benefits, what that person needs to do to qualify for those benefits, if it's a qualified position, and just some general expectations about the role. And we also included on that, if you'd like to approve this way of doing a work agreement, we also added to it the acknowledgement of reading the personnel policy. And Tim and I have the idea that we're gonna create packets for every new appointee, every new employee, every new elected official, they're gonna get a packet with their work agreement and a copy of the personnel policy. And that they, they have to acknowledge receipt of that. They have to read it and sign it before any payments are made. Or, or, you know, that, that's just gonna be an expectation. So that way we, we know that everyone who's working for the town, serving the town, that they have access to these policies and that they've- And we're all on the same page. Exactly. So these, these are not specific work agreements. These just very much defined for the town because there's always questions. We don't want to have these questions anymore. It's like this qual, this position qualifies, this one doesn't. If this one qualifies, we have to do this to make it qualify. It's just defining it to remove the confusion.
Okay.
Did you want to add anything, Tim?
Only that the majority of them are informational, again, just for someone who's new to a board or new to a commission of what to expect and primarily how they'll get their stipends, if there is one, and things of that nature.
And I would really like for, to add an addendum to the personnel policy that says that you will, you know, upon onboarding, you're going to get this work agreement and a copy of the personnel policy. That could, that could be one sentence addendum. I can write it if you approve me to do it. And then Tim and I will make these packets for everybody. And you guys have got copies of the work agreements. Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And in that case, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the work agreement as written.
Except for the, I would hold out the listers because they still need to meet and discuss.
No, that, that's covering the town as a whole because we're trying to streamline, in my opinion.
So did you see the, did you see the work agreements? Because they're all different for every role.
I did. I looked at them on the computer.
Because I made three for the listers. I think you cannot make a decision on the listers.
We can't make a decision on the listers because there's three different work agreements there and they haven't agreed to one of them now.
Yeah, but the other ones that-
Except for the listers then.
Right. No, I agree with that Jamie, but the listers, there's, there's different work agreements, whether or not they work the same amount of hours per lister, whether or not they have a head lister. There's, there's just different things. We can't-
But that would fall under their personal organization, in my opinion.
Yes, but the reason why you need the, that's the reason why you need the work agreement is so that the main lister, if they're working those amount of hours, that qualifies them for beamers. They need a work agreement to qualify.
I understand that. And that's why I was willing to approve or make the motion for all of them. Because once the listers themselves organize for their positions, then they will sign-
I see you, you-
Said-
I understand.
Said agreement.
Okay.
That's, that's where I was going.
We still have not written them for people that have, we've not done one for the treasurer yet or the town clerk. And we haven't done them for us, the ones that, that work in the office. But we will work on those for the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but that's why-
So are we keeping the motion? Are we going to wait?
I don't think the motion had a second, did it?
I would love to give it to the planning commission and DRB at least.
Okay.
The new people, you know.
I make a motion that we approve all work agreements except for the listers that have been drafted and sent to us. And then at our next regularly scheduled meeting, we work on, we do the listers agreements.
And the rest of us.
Yeah, I, well, I made a select board one, which is-
Right, is that there, yes.
Um, so the next one, it would be the town clerk, the treasurer, the office staff. I mean, we gotta do road crew too and everything, so we'll, we'll have it all ready for the next one.
Okay.
Essentially for every employee or appointee or elected, etc.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong. And I, and I might have missed this. Aren't, these were recommendations-
From VLCT.
From VLCT. Did you say that? I didn't.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
But thank you.
So this is not, this is not something that's willy nilly, we're coming up with as a select board. These are all recommendations from the VLCT that every-
And beamers.
The, the beamers, that every town should have.
Absolutely.
It's nothing, nothing that we're doing that's, we're not recreating the wheel.
No.
No, and we're formalizing our processes because, so that way just everyone's on the same page. We're just kind of trying to take out that confusion and not knowing and miscommunication thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We actually started talking about this last year.
Right.
And-
Okay. Yeah. Bob?
Yeah, when we say it's recommended by the VLCT, is it also their model language?
No, they did not offer me any model language, but I was told generally what goes into them. And that's why I said it's the most bare bones things that I sent to you.
Okay. All right, that's, that's good.
Hours expected, compensation, and whether or not it qualifies for benefits. And that I read the personnel policy. That's it.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table with Mike. Do I have a second?
Well, and we do have a hand raised. Do we?
Well, before you take motions on things, you should give the public, if you're gonna take a motion, if any member of the public wants to make a comment, I know that's something that Mr. Fisher's told us multiple times.
I can't even see that though. Okay, go ahead.
It's a town clerk. It looks like it's Julie.
Julie?
Julie?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
I'm trying to unmute myself.
Oh, we can hear you.
I have a question. I understand that you guys want to share that with all of us. However, is there a way that you can share the agreement with us prior to you guys coming up with it? So like if I was handed it today and that we can look at it and review and if we have questions or not? Because what happens if we don't want to sign that we received or acknowledged the personnel policy as, now I'm not saying that we all would or wouldn't, but being elected verse? Because we've always had history between that, yes, we are technically employees because we get paid. However, we're only employees at certain time or at convenience of some people. So my thing is, so if we choose opt not to sign, what is the fallout for us not to sign it if we don't agree? Or if we have questions or concerns with it and that you expect us to say, okay, we have to sign it tomorrow and
management, where you have policies and people have to sign certain things. I have had employees in the past write on the paper, do not agree, refuse to sign, and date it initially.
Okay.
I'm sure that there's something that we could work out.
Well, I'm only asking because like I said, I've worked for the town for 18 years and I've only ever once gotten a personnel policy. And that was only because we had to change it so that I could get health insurance. So being that, like being elected, you know what I mean? I'm not-
I, I-
I'm not being, trying to be, you know.
No, no, I understand.
I just wanna, like, so can at least we review it prior to just saying, oh, here, you're just giving it to her today and we expect you to sign it?
Well, we were, we were gonna, Julie, we were gonna sit with you anyway to do your, but, yeah, but this is about giving you the personnel policy.
Right. And there's, there is language, which is why we haven't done your positions yet, Julie, because we do draft ones that, that are for elected officials that say that part of the personnel policy doesn't apply.
Well, I'm just saying it just, like, not just for like, just me, just as in general of all of us that, you know, work through the town and stuff, just the, you know. That's all, that's my only question on that.
Okay, Julie, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Any more discussion? Ronnie, are you good?
The motion was that, probably all of this is part of it, so we get, until we talk to them.
Correct.
And then just approve the appointed position one.
Yes.
Which is DRB Planning Commission, Parks and Rec.
Of those three.
And if, did you want me to read quickly what it says on one of these? I mean, no, we're good?
No, we're good.
I'll put them up. I'll put a sample. I'll put a sample on the website and on the Facebook page, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Any more further discussion? None? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Thank you. All right, town clerk salary. Tim?
Right, not you, Tim? Well, you're the one who's been working on it.
Well, I, you can talk on it, Tim, but I got an idea too, so.
Okay, so I sent around some information in regards to what the position has earned in the last three years. And then there was also the average amount of those three years. And I believe that that position in order, because there is gonna be some change between how it was in the past and how it's gone in the future, I think out of fairness, it's when trying to guide what that amount should be, it should always be towards the most beneficial for that person at this point, which would be the average. And I would even suggest that you take into account whatever the projected increase for employees is for next budget, next year, and just add it in now and have it take effect. Since, or you have it take effect, have her salary take effect at the point of life hers.
I thought I started it and now I can't find it.
I, I have it right in front of me. I, I have the averages. I, I have the actual salaries from-
From like Bennington and stuff, correct?
I, I-
That one that you're looking at?
We can do that if you want. I have the actual salaries here for, for-[1707.33] We can do that if you want. I have the actual salaries here for, for.
Her, her total earnings over the past three years.
Julie's, Julie's total earnings from twenty eighteen was thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars. Twenty nineteen was forty-two two ninety-four, twenty twenty was forty-one four seventy-two. For an average, three-year average of forty thousand seven seventy-nine.
Uh, uh, that's, and that's the, right, that's, so that's the average over those three full years, but of course, the first one is the lowest.
That's right. Which, those salaries are in line, Tim did our charts. There, I, I'm comfortable with that being in line with towns of similar size. Um, there is one that, um, there's one that's considerably less.
And there was one considerably higher.
There was two, there was two considerable, considerably less and one considerably higher. The two that were considerably less look like they may have been almost a stipend type of position. This is what you get. Um, so to simplify things, um, I've been doing a little math here. Um, the three-year average has been forty thousand seven seventy-nine. I would make a proposal, make a, I'll make a motion that for the first year, starting July first of twenty twenty-one, is our first fiscal year under this system, um, we paid Julie forty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
I was thinking.
Well, can I, um, uh, uh, sorry, but I'm looking at it. I mean, if we were, that's because we went back to twenty eighteen, which was particularly low. And I think to be fair, we should be, uh, on parity with what she's, which she's currently making. And if you were to take the last two years, I mean, uh, that, that proposal is the, is about the same as the lesser of the last two years. I, I would almost go with the maximum because it's not that much greater. It's, it's forty-two-three was her twenty nineteen.
Go ahead.
Jamie Percy, um, personally, since the town did not vote to have her position appointed under the select board, therefore, we cannot do an annual evaluation. Um, like you normally would in a, uh, job criteria. I don't think that we should be appointing the sal-, or, yeah, setting the salary. I think it should stay the same. That's my opinion.
The, the voters made it so that she gets salary now, so now you legally have to give her a salary.
The voters said that we could. That's a, that's a, if you look at, I can't think of the word right now.
The, I, 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 I'm gonna, Bob, I'm gonna lean, I'm gonna lean on agreeing with you on this. I see your point and I see it exactly as you're seeing it. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna rescind my motion that didn't have a second anyway. And I'm going to go to a forty-two thousand five hundred dollar salary starting July first, twenty twenty-one, with a two percent increase yearly for the next three years, or while she's in office. Which is approximately eight hundred and seventy-five bucks, give or take, a year, uh, after that.
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay, and I just wanna, for discussion, point out when somebody is salary. I believe I'm correct with the, on this, that they don't get vacation or anything. This is if she works twenty-four hours or if she works fifty hours. She gets a salary, and I just want people to realize this out there, the public. So if Julie works twenty-four hours, she still gets, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, eight hundred dollars a week. If she works sixty hours a week, she's gonna get eight hundred dollars a week. If she takes a two weeks vacation in June or July, because she wants to go somewhere, she's gonna get paid her eight hundred dollars. I want everybody out there to realize when somebody is salary, they get paid their salary, their weekly pay, no matter if they're here or if they're not. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. Okay? So.
That's true.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, I was just saying that, that's true. I think it means it's, uh, what is it, exempt?
Right, correct.
Right, so it, it's an exempt position, and, and usually that translates, not always, but usually that translates to, um, we can work the hell out of them and not have to pay them extra.
Right, but I mean, Julie works really hard.
She works quite a bit anyway.
Especially when there's an election, and she works hard. And if she wants to take a week off in June and a week off in July and a week off in August, I am certainly okay with that. And I think she should be able to take time off as needed. Um, so I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Bob seconded. Any further discussion? Julie, do you have anything to add? Julie, are you there? I can't see.
She's there.
I'm still trying to figure out how to unmute myself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're, you're good.
We're good, Julie.
No, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
I think before anything, uh, it's set in stone, most of them, you know, it's, you know. Uh, I think we ought to really have something that is set in stone. She gets a, she gets a couple of weeks vacation, that's fine, I don't care. What about holidays? What about anything else that goes with being an employee?
When your salary?
When your sal-, I know what salary is. I know what salary exempt is, and I know what salary non-exempt is.
Okay.
I worked in a huge factory. I know exactly what it is.
Okay.
And where they had a union and stuff, so I know it was by the rules, by the law. What I'm saying is you, you can't turn around and say, well, all right, you, I wanna take a couple of weeks off or three weeks off. Say, well, you can do that, or you can say, well, go ahead. No, uh, the people, we should decide before, because this is figured in her salary, period. It said forty-two thousand five hundred. That's the salary, or whatever you're talking about. And I don't mind that, uh, the standard increase like Mike was talking about, if you had two, three percent, whatever it is. Whatever the, the other companies are getting around the area, whatever, I don't mind that. Because there's gonna be differences there, and, uh, it's, it's a whole different program. And I don't want her to feel that she's been shoved, shoved out the door or shoved in a corner somewhere. And I don't want any of the taxpayers to feel, hey, come on, we, there's no limit on what we give for people. I think that should have been discussed before we started. I mean, we can discuss it right now. If you wanna give a couple of weeks vacation, that's fine. But to start off with, and then if they're, if they're here, you can do like industry does. You might get a couple of weeks to start off with, but later on, you get three weeks, you might get a month. Depends how long you're there. Uh, that's just my opinion.
That's all true. I think we ought to have some, uh, uh, some structured, uh, structured vacation policy for. So, can, does that mean that we can, uh, can we vote on her salary tonight? On the condition that we're going to come up with a structured, uh, you know, whatever the structured, uh, uh, benefits are? Including the, uh, including the salary, or, I'm sorry, including the vacation.
Well, vacation, I mean, like, uh, well, people lost salary here before they got the holidays. They took them off salary because they didn't make enough money. A state made us do that.
I don't think, my, just my opinion on this whole process right here, I, I agree with you, Ronnie, to a certain extent. But I also don't think that we can tell an elected official what hours they're going or not going to work.
That's the point.
So, right, right, right. But, but that goes along with the vacations. I believe, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, please, and I know you will. I believe, I believe that we can set a salary tonight for Julie. And I believe that we can come up with a work agreement with Julie that is going to make all of us happy, including her, and the taxpayers of the town. I firmly believe that. Um, I think moving forward though, Ronnie, if we're gonna do anybody else, I think your point is absolutely a valid one. On the, on the vacations or whatever, I, I really believe that. But I believe tonight we can set this salary, get this off our table. I believe we can come up with a work agreement with Julie.
I know we can.
Right, right, and I, but I.
Understandable, but all I'm saying is.
I agree with your point.
Been left in the dark, and later on, July first, I, I come through quick.
I know, but I think.
Pay starts, and that's when it's, when the different situation.
I think, I think Tim and Julie can probably sit down here in the office within, within an hour next week or tomorrow, or she doesn't work tomorrow. Within an hour next week, I believe that Tim and Julie can come up with a, with a work agreement that, that makes us happy, makes the taxpayers happy, and makes her happy. And, and I, I think moving forward, I think your point is absolutely valid, and I think that's what we should do moving forward.
I will also send a quick, I will also send a quick note to the VLCT because I, from what I heard today, I do believe there are reasons why you cannot set a, um, a certain holiday and, um, vacation schedule with elected officials who receive salary. But I will double check that, just to, just to ensure where we're at. Make sure we do everything above book the way it's meant to be done, and that Julie has the most protections and access to benefits. You know, that she, that she deserves.
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable with that, Julie?
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, Julie, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
She's working with you, ma'am. Okay, moving on to revised zoning permit. Everybody got their revised permit in their, um.
We can combine the next two, actually.
Yeah, they're well-written.
So I know, I know we had some questions, uh, at the last meeting, Bob, um, you, you especially had some questions about fees and, and stuff. So I got thinking about it. So, the last couple of years, um, we've written, la- last year specifically, I wrote thirty permits. Um, we knew that we lose money on every single DRB permit, and I apologize, I don't know the number of, of permits that went to the DRB in twenty twenty, but let's just say that, and, and each permit is generally fifty-eight dollars. So let's say for round numbers, we go sixty bucks. The permits written in twenty twenty generated eighteen hundred dollars worth of income. Um, the, the zoning administrator's salary for a year is thirty-six hundred. We lost eighteen hundred dollars before I wrote a permit. So that was kind of my going, going into this new fee schedule, and I, and I know you had some questions about that. And I think, I think the new fee schedule that Megan and I have come up with, I think is a really fair and equitable fee schedule. Um, you know, and, and we, we obviously, you have it in your package. I don't, did you see it, Bob? I'm sure you did, right?
I did.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions on that? I mean, I'll, I'll give it a shot at answering them. Our subdivision will stay the same, although, all the requirements for a major and minor subdivisions all stay the same. Our building, this building permit is virtually the same, except for we're including a piece of graph paper in there. Um, because sometimes you get some pretty sketchy sketches, and, you know, I mean, not everybody's an artist. But with a piece of graph paper, it may make it easier for them. Um, the process that we have in place now, we started it last week with Megan, she receives the permits, she gets them started. Um, hands them to me, we get going on it, uh, there's a better chain of command. It, I think the process is gonna be a lot smoother, and, um, we, we really didn't change this permit. Only the appearance of it, really, and the fee schedule. That was the big change.
Any other questions from anybody?
Well, I, I get, I get, in looking at the fee structure, I, the, um, if I came in and, uh, and wanted to use all of my money to, to, to build myself a fifteen thousand square foot house. Uh, there, uh, it, it seems to be that there ought to be a cap on it, and, and there isn't. It's, it's three thousand feet and over, it's five hundred plus, uh, thirty-five dollars for every additional five hundred square feet. Um, that, uh, that, um, and, and it's not, I, I'm, I'm not trying to weight it toward a, here, here's what I'm thinking. Is that it, it, no fee, no permit should cost more than it costs the town to, to process it. Right? This shouldn't be a source of revenue, but we want, don't want, also shouldn't be a source of loss. So I understand what we're doing, but I, I, I also don't want to, uh, disincentive to building or charge people more than it actually costs, uh, costs us, uh, it costs the town. And it, I mean, this would definitely shore up the, uh, the deficit, but I think it might go further than that.
I, I don't, I don't think, I personally don't believe that's gonna happen, Bob, because, um, probably seventy-five percent of the permits that I write are for sheds, garages, and additions. Maybe even more than that, so it's on the.
Right, but, but what, I guess what I'm getting at is, is like, uh, any structure here in this one would be seventy-five dollars at least.
Yeah.
And then if I, if you're building a house, a two thousand square foot house, it's five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's for, uh, yeah, and that's just to, to let the town approve your, and today, what is it?
Uh, a hundred and eight dollars for a house.
And it's any house, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep, any house. And, and a basic permit is fifty-eight dollars. For the basic shed, garage, um, addition is fifty-eight dollars. We're not, we're not gonna make money, Bob.
Well, I, no, I, no, I don't think, I, I don't think we are. I, I don't think we are gonna make money, but I, I don't like the idea of there's no, there's no cap. I mean, I really don't like the idea that, uh, because that's kind of a disincentive for, for larger construction projects. And, uh, and, and it, uh, I, I don't know, I, i- i- if we hit, uh, if we go by this structure, for example, um, uh, why wouldn't we go with two thousand and over? Instead of, instead of putting something on that every, every additional square feet, we add more to it. There aren't gonna be that many of those. It's really not gonna, uh, it's really not gonna make us a whole lot of money. Um, but we also don't wanna create a disincentive for larger projects. So I, why wouldn't it be something like, uh, two thousand, two thousand and over is five twenty-five, and that's the end of the structure?
We can, we can set it up however we want. I mean, I personally disagree with that, but, um, you know, but that's my opinion.
But, and it, and, and maybe it's my, you know, uh.
However, however the board decides. I mean, this is just a, this was a draft that Megan and I worked on, and, and, um, you know, that's, that's where we, that's where we're at with it.
Yeah, oh, I, and I, I like it very much. I mean, it's, it's, it was a lot of work, and it's a, it, 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 this was a lot of work, and it's a, and, and it's structured, it's structured nicely. Um, I just, uh, I just, I, I'm just concerned about a disincentive for larger ones, and I don't want, uh, and I don't, um, I mean, it, it, it's already enough that people have to come and ask the town for permission to build on their own property, right? That's what they have to do. They, and they have to pay the town in order to be able to build on their own property. And that, that's where I'm, where I'm coming from. And so, it, it, and so it, we need to be respectful of that and mindful of it. And, uh, and, and make it as easy and cheap as possible for people to be able to do that. Now, it's costing the town, well, it, it costs the town because we have to enforce the laws that we created. Right? That, that's why it costs the town.
Right, exactly. The, the, you know, like I said, my basic salary as a zoning administrator is thirty-six hundred a year. And, you know, last year, we, we didn't generate, I mean, I'd have to go back and really look it up. But if we generated two thousand dollars of that, would, would have probably been a lot. If that.
Right, no, I understand, but, but that's, but that's the, that's the cost of government. I mean, the, the, if we come up with, if we're putting restrictions or hurdles in the public's way in order to build on their own property, then, uh, and now we're saying, now that we put, now that we, government in general, has put these restrictions in place, we're then gonna charge the people who's, who are the subjects of our restrictions in order to be able to build on their own property. And that's where I'm having a fundamental problem with, 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 uh, with it. I mean, I, I do understand that we may lose something on it, but that's, uh, uh, um, i- i- if, if the process were more streamlined, or we didn't have the, uh, I guess we really can't, can't look at, uh, decreasing the cost of the zoning administrator. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to take your, uh, take your thirty-six hundred away. So, but, uh, uh, I guess that's a good point. I would feel better about it if it had a cap, and it didn't, it wasn't just open-ended.
Hey, Jamie, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's well-written, and the way it's set up is fair to the taxpayers also. You've gotta remember that depending on the size of the building, also depends on what's going in that building as far as a business or whatever. And it could create more work for the DRB on what they have to take and send out, and the number of hearings, depending on what it is. Therefore, I think the cost reflects that.
Well, I think, uh, and, and my counter to that is if it's a business and it's, and it's gonna employ our citizens, then it's worth the, the extra money that we're paying a town, a zoning administrator. It increased, that increases our tax base in other areas. I, I just, I mean, I would be fine with this if it had, had a cap, if it just stopped at the, and I think it's a little high, but, but that's okay. Uh, I'm willing to go with it. If it stopped at twenty-five, if it stopped at five hundred and twenty-five dollars at two thousand square feet, and that was two thousand and over, uh, um, uh, I, I, I would be okay with that.
That's what I'm saying is.
But that's not where it is, it's three thousand square feet and over is five hundred dollars, plus thirty-five dollars for every additional five hundred square feet. Oh, which also, is that right?
Yes.
No, so like, so like a legal warning in the newspaper can be anywhere between a hundred and seventy to two hundred and twenty bucks, is what I've noticed. So that's just played up the, that's just to put it in the banner, then Megan's time to create the warning to put it out, then the time to write the butter letters, to mail the butter letters, the postage for the butter letters, all that is also Megan's time. Yep, site visits, so when you have the larger buildings, you have site visits, now you're, Megan is going on those site visits as well. I mean, a lot of it is that, you know, the hourly time as well, it does add up. I think that certainly on, I'm sure we spend five hundred dollars on a, like on some of the warnings that I did when I was doing Megan's job. I'm sure we spent close to five hundred dollars.
I mean, that's where I was going.
So why isn't that, well, first of all, I do see an issue with it, first of all, for three, three thousand, if I had exactly three thousand square feet that I was building, I would pay less than two thousand square feet. So I think that needs to be looked at. But the, but besides that, I think everything that was just itemized would be paid for if you had a cap, at the five twenty-five, right? It doesn't become more expensive because the building's bigger.
Quite a little bit, but it's just because if you have more complicated buildings, that requires more complicated like meetings with engineers, it often requires re-warnings, and
So.
Neighbors are, yeah.
When we're in court, which we've been, so Bob, would you be comfortable, would you be comfortable if we took and put a cap of thirty-five hundred square feet and above was a cap of six hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, well, yes, I would, I would vote for it, it still seems like a lot of money to pay to build on your own property, but but I do understand that there's costs associated with it, we have to adhere to the, to the rules. So, yeah, I would be comfortable with that.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I think that's a little steep.
Well, then I'm with Ronnie, I was looking for some support there.
Well, I look at it, I don't know if I'm following these lines across, I think I am. There's two thousand to two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, so that's three thousand square feet. That's five twenty-five. I think that's enough for anybody building something on their own property.
I totally disagree with it, because if somebody's building, there's a, there's a four-plus million dollar house going in that northwest hill, right now, and they paid a hundred and eight dollars to build it.
Yeah, but, but look at it this way, if somebody wants to build that high, that big of a property, and it costs us some money for the zoning administrator, for the warning and everything else, now we've got a valuable property that gets taxed every year.
That's the point I got right there.
So, I mean, we just seem to have them coming and going here, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's a disincentive to building. So, that's where the cap comes in, and also you do have to look at the numbers. Two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars of square feet is less expen, is more expensive than three thousand square feet.
I'm ready to make a motion if nobody has anything else.
Okay.
I still think that's, I agree with Bob totally that if a person builds a nice home, ain't there some way that we, we could recover some of this DRB money? The zoning administrator, the zoning administrator doesn't only give out permits. He's supposed to be fining people and everything else, so there's a lot more to that zoning job than just giving out a permit.
For sure.
Surely, if you go up to, you know, to give a guy a permit for a garage or something, you get seventy-five dollars, I'm sure the town makes it all right. If the paperwork's made all right, and it should be made all right. Somebody comes to the town, they hear, here's my, my plan, you got your paper? Guy takes and goes and looks at it, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with that, but I do feel the same way as at first, I was, I was always concerned about the cap, but you gotta think about the money you're gonna get in taxes. You're gonna get a lot of money in taxes. Especially in this town, and that doesn't drop off, does it? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, and that's year over year over year over year.
On your, on the appraisal of your building, that don't drop off, does it? It keeps right on going, right? So if you've got a half a million dollar house, why are you gonna pay on a half a million dollars? Or whatever, taxes, and our taxes here are fairly high, so we ought to get some government out of taxes, that's what we're running the show on, taxes. That's the only reason I say that. And three thousand square feet, I think is enough for most people's houses. Maybe not.
One of you have been telling me they're well over it.
Okay.
There's some.
But there's a lot under, well under it too.
I make a motion that we approve this permit application and fee schedule with a six hundred and fifty dollar cap on anything over thirty-five hundred square feet.
Any further discussion? Is there anybody out there with public comment? I can't see, is there any hand raised? Seeing none, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Okay, cover ordinance.
Oh, can I, can I, there is something that we did not, I, I don't know if we can do it now, because we've already moved past it, but there's something we didn't address with the work agreement one, and it was about working hours for me and Megan, and we didn't go there, and we were should we just put it on the next meeting? Cause we wanted to, I've been decreased, and we wanted to give her hours.
No, we've just, we've talked about it, but we didn't go there. All right, let's go there after the cover ordinance.
Okay, thank you, I mean, it could have been under work agreement, so I feel like
All right, so cover ordinance, does everybody have their traffic ordinance sheet? Ronnie, do you have one?
This, this traffic ordinance that has been supplied, has already been adopted by the select board in Megan sent that to me earlier, twenty eighteen, I believe.
Yeah, Ronnie did it.
Yeah.
Ronnie and Bob?
Yeah, I have it right here, December twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, the ordinance that you're looking at was adopted by the select board. So basically, all we're doing is changing and adding some verbiage on line twenty-four and line twenty-five. This traffic ordinance, like I said, already exists in the town. So, the last page of the load covering traffic ordinance are the only two changes, which are section twenty-four and section twenty-five. And, and I personally believe that we really need to do this, and we need to make it effective.
Immediately.
Immediately, like, as soon as we walk out of here tonight.
I agree.
What's that?
Are you gonna read it?
I'll read it if you want to, sure, I'll read it, so that, so that the taxpayers know.
Okay.
So the adopted version, which was adopted on December twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, line twenty-four says, "A person violating any of the preceding ordinance shall be fined not less than fifteen dollars or more than five hundred for each offense." The new proposed line twenty-four, "A person violating any of the preceding ordinance shall be fined not less than two hundred and fifty dollars or more than five hundred for each offense. A person shall be fined five hundred dollars for each offense thereafter." So multiple offenders are gonna pay multiple times. Line twenty-five, in the existing ordinance, "Motor vehicle transporting garbage, rubbish, or sand, gravel, stone over a public highway within the town of Powell shall be secured at all times." Line twenty-five, "Motor vehicle transporting garbage, rubbish, brush, sand, gravel, stone, or any loose debris over a public highway within the town of Powell shall be secured at all times."
Should it be secured and covered? Because if you have secured, somebody could put a strap over it and think it's secured, and stuff could still blow out.
And that's, would be up to the discretion of the sheriff's department, but we can do that, sure, I'm fine with that.
I want secured and covered. Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
That's different, they're not gonna blow off.
That's right, but I'm just explaining to you, that's why it doesn't say covered. Covered is for stuff that could blow out of the truck.
Right.
If you're hauling, you know, you're hauling cars down through, you know, they've got to cover them up. Passing them on the vehicle.
People need to use common sense, and some people don't.
Well, I think
It's true.
I'm fine with that part of it, but Ronnie has a good point. You can't cover, you can't, you could do secured or covered. There you go, and, and/or covered, I like that.
Or covered.
Yep.
So if they have leaves or garbage, they should be covered.
Or bags of bottles, or whatever they have, that's right. I'm sick of looking at garbage on the side of Route seven, Route three forty-six, and every other road in town. I'm sick of it, I've had enough.
We get complaints every week from residents.
Which just, needs to be done, and it needs to be done now.
Yeah.
Tell them we did it.
Right.
Well, that's my next stop. I gotta get this in place first, and then, and then the zoning administrator can go visit, make some site visits. But right now, I gotta get this one in place. I got a little plan worked out in my pea brain. One step at a time, Rebecca, one step at a time, no, no, that's fine, that's fine, I appreciate the question, but yes. I think it's, I think that, I've done some research on the zoning permit that's in place at the site, and we're gonna have a discussion, but I need this in place first.
Very good, I understand.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table, do I have a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, so I did wanna talk about the fine, a person, what we said on twenty-four, what we're voting on is to change twenty-four and twenty-five to new language, correct? War would be changed to a person violating any of the preceding ordinance shall be fined not less than two hundred and fifty on their first offense. I mean, I understand that we wanna do that to clean up, and we wanna make sure that people understand, but, but all of these things, I, you know, so if somebody gets pulled over because they rolled, because they rolled through a stop sign, or I mean, there isn't, there isn't any leeway here for like a warning, or, I mean, that's huge.
And I, and it should be, Bob, have you run up and down Route seven and Route three forty-six?
No, no, but this isn't specific to litter, this is, it doesn't say, it says any of these ordinances, it doesn't say litter is two hundred and fifty bucks. It says that any of these things, you get pulled over for the first time, you're paying two hundred and fifty bucks. So I, I thought we were going after the, you know, making sure that the, the sides of the roads were clean. I mean, fifteen to two hundred and fifty, that's what we're voting on.
No, two hundred and fifty to no more than five hundred, and then after that, five hundred for any other incident.
But, but what I'm saying is, the current, the current language is fifteen dollars for your first offense. About to change it to two hundred and fifty, and it's not specific to littering.
The only other two, the only other two violations in there are that, on the proceeding under that twenty-four, are somebody riding a bicycle. And then twenty-nine changes again, twenty-nine changes, "A person violating any of the preceding four ordinances shall be fined not less than five dollars or more than a hundred."
Well, any of the preceding ordinances, oh, you mean the ones that come after twenty-four?
That's right, they're after.
Oh, I'm, okay, okay, then I, okay, now, now I'm with you, I'm sorry, I thought I was reading the
Preceding, proceeding.
Okay.
So it's, basically, the three, the three ordinances that would fall under the new fine system, "No person shall create any litter, north road trash, garbage, or any other material on any public highway or stream or body of water in the town of Powell." "No person so operator allowed to be operated and ride a bicycle on any highway or street in the town which is not properly equipped with a front headlight, rear lighter, deflector. And bicycle operated in the town shall be operated in a single line to the right side of the highway going with traffic, and shall be operated in a careful and courteous manner."
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna fine those people, two hundred and fifty bucks, if they don't have a headlight on their bicycle. Well, I understand it's a safety issue, but you could say that if it was five hundred, you could say that if it was fifteen hundred. What's reasonable? You're, you're on a bike, you're riding, you're trying to get home, it's daytime, and, and it's dusk. At what point are you in, do you have to get off and start pushing it, because it's, you're in violation of, you're gonna pay two hundred and fifty bucks?
We can just, we can add the language, Bob, to make it litter and debris, but specific so that it covers brush and you know, bottles and cans and whatever, we can add language.
I've got one question on that, let's just think.
Five hundred bucks. Five hundred dollars for litter, Joel just sent me a text. Yeah, Joel just sent me a text, five hundred dollars state law for littering. So we're giving them a break at two fifty.
That's right, but I don't
No, I I'm fine with it applying to littering, I'm not sure I'm fine with it applying to a front headlight on a bicycle.
It's for trash only, Bob. And debris.
Debris, so this is what I've changed it to. If, if you guys think this will go, so a person violating any of the preceding ordinances related to litter and debris shall be fined not less than two hundred and fifty or more than five hundred for each offense.
Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that, now that I know what the state charges. I don't wanna turn into a Lainey Merrill or an Nasser out here.
Okay. Did we have a motion? I'm so sorry, I'm starting to get a little wacko.
It's eight-thirty, relax, you got a half hour to go, and I'm gonna keep you here.
So, I just can't remember if we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, but
Well, we need to add the new language.
We have to add the new language.
You stated.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended, "A person violating any of the preceding ordinance related to litter and/or debris shall be fined not less than two hundred and fifty dollars or more than five hundred dollars, and then there for each other offense, five hundred thereafter." I didn't say that quite correctly, but
Close enough.
Close enough. Is everybody okay with that? Anybody in public comment? Please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, so, Mike, are you gonna amend that motion?
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to the litter and debris specific, yeah.
Okay, do I have a second? Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
You know, now we need to make this, we need to make a specific date on this, whether it starts, and it should start tomorrow.
Yes.
Effective
Twenty-third, April twenty-one.
Okay, well, whoever, yep, you got that.
I'll make a motion that it's effective, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Hours. And, and hours. No, no, I need the mic, because I'm gonna talk about hours, but thank you for handing me, I'll take your phone and your money too.
It's all you want?
Yeah, phone, money, all of it, okay. So, as I've been talking about for quite some time now, we have a really great situation going on in here in the office with our two new hires, things are, new systems are being implemented, and it's, I'm not really finding myself putting out. And it's, uh, I'm not really finding myself putting out so many fires and, um, what's, I've been talking to, and I've actually done it for two weeks, about reducing my hours, um, because we just have the help that we need now. And so, um, I'm advocating, and I, I, I've been talking about this for a bit. I'm advocating that you give Megan full-time hours. She needs them. She's on multiple boards and commissions. Um, I'm gonna give her some of my stuff, um, and I'm gonna go down to part-time and remove my benefits. Um, and my goal is, over the next couple of months, to give enough knowledge transfer to Tim and to Megan, but I'm not leaving. I won't leave. But I think that we can get to a point where I'm working for you guys on an as-needed basis. You need a grant written. Um, I have a lot of work to do. If you have a legal problem, you're gonna be bringing me back in, um, FOIAs, all of that. But I think that I can go more towards a contractual basis where, um, you know, uh, I'm getting paid per hour and you're using the only one you need to use my services. Um, sometimes that's probably gonna be quite a bit, and other times you're not gonna need me, I hope. Because that would mean that things are running, running nicely, you know? Um, so, um, I just, I meant to talk about that during work agreements. Um, and Megan really does need the full-time work. I think it would help you retain her as an employee. Um, it's hard to find, when you are working a part-time job and you need full-time work, it's hard to piece that together. Um, she's very competent and I can, you know, I'm gonna give her some, a lot of the things that I do, such as like the Facebook page and, um, getting that newsletter going and, um, but we, we're gonna create, if you guys approve her hours and my reduction, um, then, um, the three of us will sit down and create an entire work plan and we can present that to you guys at the next meeting. But I'd like to get her going. She's got enough to do. We can give her enough to do to work full-time hours and I won't be taking that, you know, it, taking my hours away. So it's not like we're changing the budget.
So what are your full hour, full-time hours for Megan?
Forty. Between thirty-two and forty is what I would say. You'll give her thirty-three to forty, you know, let her have benefits.
So basically, you're gonna go back to doing what your job was initially.
What my job was originally supposed to be, but became something else because you needed it.
Correct.
Correct.
We needed, we needed other stuff.
Yeah.
This other actually falls within her job description.
Correct.
Anyways.
Right.
So.
I ended up, I took on a lot of administrative stuff when really that was never the intention.
Right.
Um, and I really think, you know, I, you know where I'm good. I'm good. Bring me in on the legal stuff, on writing letters if you need someone at the state to talk to, all of that, writing a grant, um, and I love that part of the work and I have no intentions of leaving. I love working for the town. It's been, it's been my honor and I really do enjoy it. So, I'm not leaving. I'm just. I'm just passing the torch.
Okay.
So my, my question, um, and I, and I believe I already know the answer, but I just want everybody else to know the answer. Is that if we increase her hours to between thirty-three and forty hours a week.
You'll give her health insurance.
Right. We'll, we'll give her the benefits, we'll do whatever needs to be done as far as that goes, but that, that includes, those thirty-three to forty hours a week would include select board meetings, DRB meetings, planning commission meetings, or any, what, what we hired her for.
Right.
Initially, so there wouldn't be any overtime necessarily generated.
Only in emergencies.
That's right, okay.
If like, God forbid, there's like three hearings and a meet, you know.
No, that's right. If there's three hearings in a week for whatever reason or a meeting and, or what, uh, and that's totally understandable, but it's not necessarily creating.
What I would do is I would set it when we create that work agreement that all overtime is approved, pre-approved, um, which is what you do for me.
There, there's times she's gonna need it. I'm not saying that we're not gonna limit it so she never gets overtime. I just want everybody to be clear, cause I, like I said, I already knew the answer, but I, I wanted to.
And also just to always, also be really clear that we're moving my hours over to her, so there's not additional hours.
Right, right, right. No, no, that's, that's right. I just wanted to make sure that we were still keeping her on task, which, like I said, you know, I thought I knew the answer anyway. We're keeping her on task of what we originally hired her for.
Now that she has, if she has full-time hours, she actually will be able to commit to very specific hours here in the office, which helps our outreach to the community when they come in and they call. She's not really been able to do that until now because she's been piecing together a bunch of different jobs. Um, and I would suggest putting, um, pre-approval of overtime. That's what I would just put that in, and because then it's only when, you know.
Well, you guys are gonna create the work agreement anyway.
Yeah, we're gonna do that over the next two weeks and present to you. And one for me as well. And, yeah.
All right, so do we need a motion on that?
I would, yes.
Yeah.
So can I entertain a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, that we increase Megan's hours to between thirty-three and forty hours, um, upon a work agreement created, um, with overtime by approval from the select board.
I would give her, are you gonna give her the hours now, though?
Affected immediately?
I would give her the hours now, but, but also that you're gonna have a work agreement in two weeks.
Uh, uh, yeah, but we can, we can, but the, we can put her hours effective the next pay period.
Yeah, okay. Because I'm already not working now, so, okay.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Is there any public discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Okay, you're welcome. So I forgot, um, backup at warrants. This is from Ellen. I had so much on my plate tonight.
Oh, pumpkin.
She wanted, remind to the public, for the taxpayers, "Taxpayers may prepay on their two thousand and twenty tax bills. You can call the treasurer."
Two thousand and twenty-one.
That's what I said, two thousand and twenty-one.
No, you said two thousand and twenty.
I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-one tax bills. Call the treasurer, eight oh two, eight two three, zero one one six, extension one oh six. To date, collected, she has collected twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents prepaid for two thousand and twenty-one tax bill. Delinquent tax report. Principal, two hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy cents. Interest, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. Fees for attorney, two hundred and thirty-nine, thirty. So delinquent taxes owed, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars and eighty-three cents. Wastewater sewer bill. Principal, seventeen thousand, three hundred and one dollars and twenty-four cents. Interest, two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents total to wastewater. I completely forgot that she wanted me to pass that along.
Don't let it happen again.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for talking.
You're welcome. Now we can open for public comment, please. If there's anybody out there in the public, please raise your hand. And I just want to point out that when you come on and raise your hand, you need to say your full name. If you don't say your full name.
We're gonna mute you.
We're gonna mute you. Um, the other meeting, somebody started talking. I tried to interrupt that person and they told me not to interrupt. You need to say your full name. We are on Zoom. People can't see your picture. You need to say your full name. Also, when there is a special meeting, you are to talk only about what is on the special meeting. If you have something to say in public comment, you may wait until the regular meeting. Thank you very much. So if anybody has anything to say or a comment, please raise your hand.
Jim?
Go ahead.
Hello there, how are you? Um, first of all, I'd just like to just make sure that, um.
Gotta say your full name, Jim.
Gotta say your full name.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, James Coase's North Paddle, um, um, North Mason Hill Road, Paddle Vermont. I just wanna make sure, um, no precedent is set. Um, if we could just have Megan double-check, um, that, uh, traffic ordinance can be changed without a public hearing, I, I'd feel more comfortable. I'd just like to make sure that that is, um, not setting up some kind of a precedent of having changes in that. And then, um, I just wanted to find out if, um, um, there could just be an update on the forensic audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yep. Um, well, we are continuing to try and reach out to the forensic auditor and as of yet, I know that our, our lawyer just sent another letter a few days ago and we are still not hearing anything from him. So we're gonna have to continue discussing and working with him to come to completion on that matter.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Is there anybody else out there with a question? Please raise your hand. Megan?
We are gonna check the first part of this question, yeah?
Yes.
Yes. Good job, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie. Okay, hearing none. Can I entertain the motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, and everybody, please have a good night.